Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get into the official business this evening, we have some special business we'd like to take care of. So I'd like to invite Eric and Sharon to come up and join me. And these individuals are from our Parks and Rec Department. And we are talking about volunteers today. And it doesn't matter what department you talk about in the city, it takes volunteers to help run them. Parks and Rec is one of those big areas that uses volunteers. But we use them with the police department, we use them at the road department, we use them at the golf course. So it's a big effort in this community. So we're all so proud of them. But I'm gonna read this proclamation, and then I will pass the mic, and you will be on the hot seat. Whereas volunteers give their time, talent, and energy tirelessly and selflessly; and whereas volunteers are vital in the quest to preserve the heritage and history of the city of Beaver Creek; and whereas volunteers spend many hours teaching children the value of teamwork, discipline, sportsmanship, and respect while increasing their motor skills through participation in sports; and whereas volunteers, ideas, input, and enthusiasm create and support many special events for the enjoyment of the entire region; and whereas volunteers support our police department, fire department, Parks and Rec, and our schools; and whereas volunteers tally many hours transporting seniors to appointments, providing assistance and program support at the senior center. One of my favorites. And whereas volunteers share their wisdom and expertise when called upon to serve on committees and boards; and whereas volunteers enrich and enhance our community, making Beaver Creek a better and more enjoyable place to live. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the city of Beaver Creek, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Volunteer Month within the city of Beaver Creek, and recognize and thank all the volunteers for contributing their time and talents to benefit our community. So Eric, I'd like to present this to you as president of the board, and shake your hand for a second, and then I'm gonna pass you the mic.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. City council members, thank you all very much for this recognition of volunteers. As the proclamation said, we couldn't do what we do in the city, not just in Parks, Recreation, and Culture, but throughout the city without the hundreds of hours of volunteer service, not just for the programs that we provide, but also for supporting many of the partners that also work with us in the community. So thank you, volunteers. We're excited. We're gonna recognize many of our volunteers at our annual program coming up on April the 16th. So again, thank you.
Sharon, would you like to add to that?
No, thank you.
Oh, well, thank you. You know, somebody told me that, but I appreciate you being here. Thank you. We can call to order the regular part of the meeting here, and we will ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Garcia for the pledge.
Thank you. If you could all stand for the pledge, please, and remain standing for prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and to nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the residents of our city, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of greater glory to you and for the service of our community. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes?
Move to approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes. We'll start off with the March 14th regular scheduled meeting minutes. Any changes? Any comments? Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from March 14th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next to the minutes is from March 21st, which is a joint work session with the school board. Anything?
Move to approve?
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the March 21st meeting as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion. Oh, extensions, please. Motion still carries. All right, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First, we'll start off with ordinance 22-09.
Ordinance 22-09 to appropriate certain real property interests owned by Jeffrey S. Trapp and Denise L. Trapp, trustees of the Trapp Family Living Trust for the Shakertown Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
This is the second reading of this ordinance. Is there any input from council? All right. I hear this is sponsored by Councilmember Bales.
Motion to approve ordinance 22-09.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 22-09. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 22-10.
Ordinance 22-10 to appropriate certain real property interests owned by Christopher Joseph Harris for the Shakertown Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. All right, any comments?
Move to approve ordinance 22-10, Your Honor?
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 22-10. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 22-11.
Ordinance 22-11, an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council repealing current Chapter 35, Section 37 Fire Insurance Trust Fund of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek, and enacting a new Chapter 35, Section 37 Fire Insurance Trust Fund to the Codified Ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. Any comments? Sponsored by the Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 22-11.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 22-11. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Extentions, by the way? I don't think there were any. Thank you. Next is ordinance 22-12.
Ordinance 22-12, an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council hereby reaffirming the ban on possessing, selling, or discharging fireworks in the city of Beaver Creek as set forth in Section 93.09 of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 3743.45.
Thank you. All right, council, we've had a reasonable amount of input since our first reading. And again, the difference between the two versus three that we used to have. So without objection, I'd like to see if there's anyone present that would like to address council on this ordinance. All right, thank you. If there's anybody that would like to address council on this ordinance, please come up and give us your name and address, and we allow three minutes for input. Thank you. If you have, if you need more than three minutes, and you have somebody that can donate their time, you can donate up to six minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's John Leonard. I've lived in Beaver Creek for 75 years, except for a couple months, a couple years that I had to go to Vietnam, and then the Marine Corps.
Welcome, Hoxton.
After all these years, I've been waiting for this law to pass forever so I could shoot off a firecracker legally. And you guys now have changed the rules on us, so I wanna talk about nine days, well, 10 days, I think is what they're talking about legally, 10 days. Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, the most important, and July 3rd, 4th, and 5th. I don't know how many people are going to be shooting off fireworks on the Chinese New Year, or on Cinco de Mayo, or on Diwawa, or whatever the heck that is, and June 10th, or Juneteenth. So I think the fireworks are going to be supposed to, mostly at Christmas, at New Year's and 4th of July. People are really tired. For the last two years, we've all been under restrictions, mostly imposed by the government, telling us what to do, how to do, how to do it, and how to live. I don't think you guys have even considered giving this law a chance. You did it right away. You passed this thing saying, nope, you can't do it. We've never had a law on Beaver Creek letting people shoot off fireworks. So how can you say it's gonna be terrible? How can you say, has anybody talked to the fire marshal? Has anybody talked to anybody? I'll tell you what, I talked to the fire marshal today, and what, he informed me that nobody on this committee bothered to come down and ask his opinion. I asked him how many houses, house fires have been started by a firecracker on the 4th of July. He has been the fire marshal for 15 years, and he said, one, maybe. He wasn't even, they weren't even sure if it was set off by a fire, by fireworks, and they had just been a house fire. I said, how many injuries have been treated by the fire department? He said, well, there's been more injuries than there has been house fires, but it's still a minimal number, very little. So I don't understand. The township, can I go over there and on Factory Road and shoot fireworks over into Beaver Creek, or Kettering along the County Line Road? This is ridiculous. This is the only damn city in a whole, in a whole state of Ohio that's considering this bill. You didn't even give it a chance. I said, let the, let the people make that decision. Why don't we look at it? Why don't we let people set off fireworks and see how many more houses are on fire? The people that are, that are setting them off now and have been for all their lives are not gonna change the way they do it. They're gonna still set off fireworks illegally. They're still gonna set off fireworks that are way past the ban. I mean, what the, what the state set out to do is regulate flash crackers and milk bottle rockets. They're not talking about huge bombs and things. I've been in Vietnam, I heard enough bombs. I'm not, I'm not opposed to this law at all. It only controls people that legally want to finally set off fireworks in Beaver Creek. And within the city limits, like I say. The townships, I asked him if the township's considering this. He said, not to his knowledge, the township is not considering any kind of law to follow Beaver Creek.
Well, sir, the, a couple things. We'll get into some of those discussions you brought up here in a minute, probably, but your three minutes are expired. Do you have somebody that wants to donate if you want to continue?
I'm done.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council on this issue? Please come up. Same situation, three minutes, please, or get some time donated.
Sure. Thank you. My name's Chris Beeler. I'm a representative for Phantom Fireworks, who, our corporate headquarters here in Ohio. I actually live in Indianapolis. I'm a regional manager for, for the company. And I'm just here to, I guess, offer my perspective. In my state, in Indiana, we did change it from where it was not legal to shoot them off to having a specified number of days, I think nine days, to be specific. And my zone, my area, actually goes across all four time zones. I'm in, I'm as far out west to Nevada, Wyoming, Missouri, and Indiana. And I can tell you that I think what this law is trying to accomplish doesn't generally get accomplished, and that's said with all due respect. People, like the gentleman said, they will shoot them off. They have been in Ohio, I believe, Ohio. They've not been legal to actually shoot off for years, yet they're, they're still done. And so I think by actually having condensed days, you know, Michigan followed Indiana with the condensed days. They do that, they do that as well. Like, like the gentleman said, with, I think it's the 29th through the 9th, whatever that day, whatever those days are, it allows law-abiding citizens to, to still shoot those off safely. I can also tell you fireworks are safer now than they've ever been. I can say that from personal experience. I've gone to China, I've seen how they're made. We do testing regularly. I know other companies do as well. I think it's just not getting accomplished what you want. I mean, there's states like California and Illinois who have the most restrictive, and New York, the most restrictive laws. They still have all their citizens pouring into other states to buy fireworks, and they still get shot off. This allows law-abiding citizens to do it on those days, and the people that are opposed to it, for different reasons, whether it's livestock, animals, PTSD, it allows them to prepare for specific days, and not just going off any time of the year. So I guess I would just strongly urge you to think about and reconsider as far as complete restriction, because I do believe, from my experience, across the country, people still shoot them off. And you can kinda see what kinda reaction a lot of, probably your local citizens have.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council on this ordinance? All right. Do we have written input?
Yes, we do. Received an email today, what was his name? From Gary Kimball. He says, I just wanted to take a moment to write you in strong support for any effort to ban residential fireworks in Beaver Creek. I have lived here 14 years now, and have come to hate, hate the 4th of July and other days of firework celebrations. It causes a great deal of strife in my home. My dog whimpers and cries on the bed the whole weekend, and she won't go outside to use the bathroom. And it stresses me out along with my other family members. Now that Dewine, who I supported in election, but couldn't possibly disagree with more on this issue, has signed the new firework law, more and more idiots around me will be launching commercial-grade fireworks whenever they want. This is outrageous. My neighborhood, Hunter's Point on Beaver Valley Road, is like a war zone numerous days a year. Several of my neighbors launched these huge mortars for hours over several days. The glass in my china cabinets rattle, my walls shake, I have to pick up burned pieces of their fireworks in my yard and off my roof. And I get so mad when I can't sleep or do much anything else. I have in the past left home and drove for hours for no reason other than to avoid these idiots in my neighborhood. My wife and I even tried to take my dog out of town one year at a Verbo rental on a farm, only to find that their neighbors not only shot fireworks, but went out shooting guns for hours. I can't get away from the idiocy. I need you to do something about it. Don't only ban the use of these fireworks in residential areas, but enforce it strictly. Make steep fines for those who violate. Two important points. One, I am for freedom, just like everyone else, and I am retired military. But one's freedom must have limits when it infringes on another's freedom, my freedom to enjoy my own property and life. I cannot possibly explain to you in this short email how much fireworks have damaged my life since I've lived here. It irritates my PTSD and causes an immense amount of conflict in my household and neighborhood. I know, I know, I am in the majority. Most of my neighbors feel the same way about these idiots and their fireworks as I do. I've talked to many of them, but you know how it is. It's typical that only one side of the issue makes a big deal of it, and you know, those who want to blow off fireworks will come after you in meetings, while the silent majority will sit on its hands and not come. But trust me, the majority desperately want peace in the neighborhood. There's no reason someone living in such close proximity to others, often less than 50 feet from a neighbor, should be allowed to blast off commercial-grade fireworks, really their bombs, for days on end, and without the slightest concern for their neighbors. I desperately urge you to take action against this ridiculous state law, and help us maintain some kind of civil living in these closely oriented residential areas. We've all heard of the broken windows theory in law enforcement. That's what happened in my area over the last decade. Law enforcement looked the other way while those idiots blew off gigantic fireworks all night, and those idiots became more and more emboldened. They have zero respect for neighbors because of it, and now the new state law will give them even more reason to disrupt the lives of so many others. Please, 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 please do something to ban or curb the use of fireworks in our neighborhood and others like it. Please. And if you choose to give it to some real teeth so that these people will stop.
Okay, thank you. All right. We will close any public input at this point. Any discussion on council's point, here's your side?
Mr. McHugh, is this, is this state law have any time restrictions?
Timing?
Time of day?
No. Substitute House Bill 172, the first part of it deals with administrative aspects, and also how a retailer qualifies to sell. The second part lists the days, but it doesn't refer to times. It says, over 20 days that one can fire fireworks is listed in the bill. And then it proceeds, as the mayor mentioned in an email, that because of home rule, which is why we're here tonight, municipalities can control the particular days involved in fireworks activities. Yeah, we can, yeah, subsection D.2, you know, we can ban them. I think we could also, you know, certainly put some restrictions if we were gonna put hours of restrictions. But the code itself doesn't have, you know, X hours to X hours. There's, you know, I mean, in theory, you couldn't go after midnight on a specific day because it says a day, right? So I think you could argue that, but to say it start, you know, you start at 8:00 p.m. and you go to 10:00 p.m., I don't see any, anywhere in the statute. I think that'd be something a city would have to adopt.
Thank you for that information, and thank you, Councilmember Curran.
Anyone else? Comments?
I know we talked about this at length for multiple meetings, so this is not the first meeting we've had on this. Chief Hurd, I know you're here tonight. Would you mind commenting just briefly on the complaints that we get from the police standpoint? Because in my opinion, the fire marshal's not nearly as important as our law enforcement, since you're the ones who enforce this, not the fire marshal. And our complaints come from residents who are having issues, and it's the police who have to respond.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I had my staff, back when we had the original work session on this, pull up the figures. So I've not had these figures for the past several weeks updated. Just for instance, last year, we had a total of 94 complaints, and 57% of those were surrounding the 4th of July, which is about a week before and a week after. And in 2020, we had 97 complaints. And again, the majority of those, 65% of those, were around that same timeframe of the 4th of July. And again, in 2019, we had approximately 69 complaints, and again, the majority of those, 70% around the 4th of July. So in saying that, the majority of our complaints are around the 4th of July, that timeframe there.
And what's the reality in the ability of our law enforcement to enforce if we put in time restrictions, or if we put in, if we allowed certain holidays but not others? And I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. McHugh, the 4th of July is more than just one day. There's provisions in the bill that allow for a weekend before or a weekend after. So in theory, a 4th of July is on a Wednesday, we could have fireworks from Sunday to Sunday.
Correct.
Mr. McHugh, do you mind talking about what's in the bill?
Yes, the 4th of July specifically, Vice Mayor, you are correct. The 3rd, 4th, and 5th days of July. So in theory, you could have a party on July 3rd, right? And shoot off fireworks, you have a party.
It also addresses the weekend before and the weekend after.
Weekends were mentioned as well, were they not?
The weekend before.
There are, there are references to weekends, yes. First day, let's say, 5th day of May, last Monday in May, Saturday, we proceed, the first Friday, Saturday, and Sunday before and after the 4th of July. So I guess depending on, I guess in theory, if it was on Wednesday, you could add a couple extra days, yeah. So you'd have Tuesday, Thursday, and in theory, the following Saturday, and, right? You could shoot off there, too.
And Chief, this, this is just maintaining status quo in Beaver Creek. It just maintains what we already have, which it seems like, based on the figures you sent us, is difficult to even address anyone, because the people have to be on scene and seen by the officers in, in order to be cited. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is pretty much maintaining the law that as it is right now. And in saying that, it's one of those crimes that we do have to witness. We have numerous of these come in. Many of them are during, obviously during the 4th of July, which we're busy already with my five to six maybe officers out there, plus a supervisor on a typical 4th of July, and the days preceding and days afterwards during the evening hours. But yes, that is true. It's, it is status quo with the law that it is right now. We, I didn't pull up the figures, but we also enforce our noise ordinance, which we would still be allowed to enforce anyways, aside from the actual fireworks complaint. But we do have to witness it. We have to either witness it, or someone has to admit to actually possessing and detonating.
Thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, Vice Mayor, just a further, as far as, that was the section that sets forth the date, you do have, though, the authority to, if you were gonna take the 4th of July, you could definitely, you could. Yeah, we could, we could lessen it, but it's, to leave it as it is. Oh, I, yeah, I would not recommend you leave it, 'cause it's pretty wide open. Right. Yeah, I mean, I think cities would have the right to, absolutely. Otherwise, yeah, it's a lot of days.
That's it for me.
All right. I have a couple comments. You know, there's, there were comments made that none of the other cities are doing anything similar. Well, I have to disagree, I have to know better. But the, or they've already figured they've got it covered with noise ordinances so that they can prevent the fireworks as well. And I wanna give, and to follow up on what you said, Vice Mayor, and this is nothing, it's been outlawed all along. It's never been allowed in Beaver Creek, because it's never been allowed in the state. So what the state did was say, okay, if we're gonna do this, we're gonna make sure that the cities can exercise home rule and make their own choices. Some cities may decide to do it. I can't imagine too many, especially the big cities, where you've got people living right next door to each other, where they can touch each other's houses, but that's, that's for each city to determine. You mentioned, somebody mentioned the township. Well, the township is not a city. Township does not have the authority to make law on fireworks, I do not believe. This law did not give anything except cities the right to exercise home rule. Does it?
I think it's.
Any jurisdiction? I think it's pretty broad, yeah. Okay. Well, I stand corrected on that, on that one. County, so, you know, I mean, in theory, Green County, I think, could ban them. Very good. We may or may not see the township follow suit, but that's, wait and see on that one. But it's one of those things that this is something that we decided that we needed to take some sort of action so that it wasn't just a broad blanket. And these types of things are subject to change. I mean, if we see that our neighbor is doing something and it's working, then we can change. Council can change this, if they wanna allow it on 4th of July, or allow it on New Year's. But it's a slippery slope in a certain, to a certain degree, because you say, okay, we're gonna do it on the 4th of July, and then all of a sudden, the Chinese New Year says, well, we don't wanna be able to do it on the Chinese New Year. We wanna, it just goes right down, down the line. Then lastly, I just wanna simply say that, you know, that this law, that the state law is gonna make it less violated, so to speak. is going to make it less violated, so to speak. That's, you know, it's no different than guns. I mean, people are going to do what they want to do if they don't care about the law. So it's not, it's not something that our ordinance is going to stop fireworks. And I hope nobody that thinks it will is that, it's just not going to happen. People are going to do it. At least with the ban, it gives us the right, the ability to control it if it gets out of hand. And I think that's where it really comes down to, is that how do you control it when it gets out of hand? I've had friends that love to do fireworks. I've gone to their houses when they did fireworks. And for those people on that particular piece of property, it's a lot of fun. But to the people down the street, not always a lot of fun. And anyway, I think I'll close it with that. And I do want to say to John, John, welcome back. I spent a vacation there as well. So I understand your position a little bit, but it's not black and white. And we're trying to make a decision that if, and if we want to change it down the road, we can make, we can do that. All right, anything else from council?
Mayor, I motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twelve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twelve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is resolution twenty-two dash fourteen.
Resolution twenty-two dash fourteen, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council extending a moratorium for an additional six months on the operation of shared mobility device services, including the placement or operation thereof, in any public right of way or on public property, and offering the same for use anywhere in the city.
Thank you. Are you taking that?
Yeah, I'll take this, Mr. Mayor. This is just a moratorium that extends the current six-month moratorium that ends at the end of this month. We do plan on having an ordinance at the next meeting, but by the time you do two readings and plus thirty days approval, we wanted to go ahead and extend this moratorium on the shared mobility devices. So there will be a process that will come forward for an ordinance, but this is just to more or less extend the current moratorium.
Questions? Motion?
Move to approve resolution twenty-two dash fourteen.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-two dash fourteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is resolution twenty-two dash fifteen.
A resolution by Beaver Creek City Council appointing Debbie Haynes as clerk of council for the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Hmm. All right, I'll take this one. We unfortunately, a good little while back, lost the services of our clerk. He served many quality years here and we appreciated it very much. And during the time of recuperation, the city manager hired a temporary position to fill in. And as things finally came to conclusion to where that position is now open, council chose to make that position, or is choosing to make that position, a part-time position. And this resolution is offering that position to none other than Ms. Debbie over there. So any comments from council? And I will say she's done a fine job while she's been here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would be thrilled to move to approve resolution twenty-two dash fifteen.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-two dash fifteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We should have took a roll call. Motion carries. All right, council time. How about we start over in the far end? Councilmember Bales?
Thank you, Mayor. And first off, congratulations, Debbie. It has been a pleasure to work with you for many years, but especially here as our clerk and look forward to many more with you. Thank you. I missed last week's school board joint meeting. Did read the minutes, but it looked like a pretty fruitful meeting with the school board and look forward to maybe talking one-on-one with a few of you to get some more insight on that. Yesterday, I just wanted to make a comment. I was, I posted some information on Facebook from the Citizens for the Better Beaver Creek about the upcoming income tax initiative. And I got some pretty great feedback, interesting feedback, good dialogue with the community, which I expected, of course. But I thought I'd bring up again the fact of the matter of how many non-residents come into Beaver Creek to work, because that really is what is so impactful to our infrastructure and our police department. And so I pulled out the latest that I could find, the 2019 census, that showed over twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five people come from another community and work inside Beaver Creek. And Beaver Creek obviously collects zero dollars from income tax and those folks work or where they live collects the tax if they've got an income tax. The unique fact is that over fifteen thousand residents who live in Beaver Creek work outside of Beaver Creek. And if they're working in communities that have income taxes, they are paying to those communities. And only about twenty-nine hundred residents who live in Beaver Creek work in Beaver Creek. And so I think that those are just really interesting facts that are available on the U.S. Census. And I just feel like Beaver Creek is not collecting the revenues it needs to continue our infrastructure as we're growing as large as we are. And I think that the facts are important to know and that the more people that know these facts and understand the impacts that they have on the community, the better we will be with the election at the beginning of May. So I just thought I'd put that out there and I did include these facts on my Facebook page. So if anybody wants to go and take a look at them, please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, would like to extend my congratulations to Debbie Haynes. It's wonderful to have you and it takes a family as well, so please extend our thanks to your husband and to your wider family as well. But we really enjoy your collegiality and the ways you've done so well with us, so thank you. I'd like to extend my congratulations to the volunteers. Thank you to Eric Corbett and Sharon Fulcher for attending today, but there's so much of Beaver Creek that operates and runs off of wonderful volunteers and it really is remarkable in terms of how many people give back. And to have a month acknowledging that is very important. So thank you to so many that volunteer within our city to make it even better. Finally, I would like to thank Mayor Stone and councilmembers Adams and Curran for attending the ribbon cutting, or sorry, the groundbreaking at University Baptist Church, which is my home church where I serve as a deacon. And so thank you to everyone who attended that. Wonderful turnout. My apologies for the late invitation for many as well, but we're excited to break ground at the intersection of Kemp and Haynes, new eighteen thousand square foot sanctuary for our church that has grown dramatically. And to note that a missions organization, Builders for Christ, will be coming this summer. People are coming from all across the United States to help build our church. Basically, a sixteen-week period, so I will be swinging a hammer and putting on some shingles and things of that nature and I'm excited to do that. But we have a lot of people coming to our community, excited to be in Beaver Creek and those that are entrepreneurially minded, a lot of people coming to hotels and need food and looking for supplies, so please reach out to those at University Baptist Church. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And it was, they're moving a lot of dirt there today, actually. They got the equipment, heavy equipment running. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the volunteers in the city of Beaver Creek. There's a lot of them out there and I don't think we could do some of the things that we do in the city without them. And I really, I think having a month that we can recognize them, and I think there's an activity coming up later in April where a certain number of them will be recognized. But all those that won't be recognized, thank you for your time and effort that you put into it. We really appreciate it. I was able to attend the groundbreaking at the Wardinger, for the Wardinger Barn. It was, what, three years now in the process to get this thing broken ground?
You have nineteen, yeah.
Hopefully, it'll go up a little faster than that three years. I look forward to having the barn back and then what they do with it. I know there's a lot of exciting activities that they're planning for that once it's built. The Historical Society has a lot of good things happening with that. And I want to thank Councilman Doer for inviting us to the University Baptist Church for the groundbreaking. It was kind of unique. I've never been to a groundbreaking quite like that where everybody had a shovel and turned dirt. It was, anybody that had a vested interest in it had an opportunity to turn dirt, which was really a good thing. Also want to let people know that the Beaver Creek Police Department is offering Safety Town again this year. It's for the kids that'll be going into kindergarten and first grade. I think it's ages four and a half to seven is what they're looking at. That sign up for that begins on April fourth, and if you have some youngsters that you want to get involved in that, I would recommend getting signed up very, very quickly on April fourth because it fills up very fast. They're going to have two weeks, two sessions a day. There's going to be June thirteenth to June sixteenth and June twentieth to twenty-third. Morning sessions are nine to eleven and the afternoon sessions are one to three. You can go on the beavercreekohio.gov website, go to the police department page and look for Safety Town to fill out the application. We're also, the Beaver Creek Police Department is also partnering with the Miami Valley Crime Prevention Association and having a crime prevention academy this next month, starts, I think, April fourth or seventh. There's still room. If you like, you can go in, again, to the beavercreekohio.gov, the police tab, and go to crime prevention academy and get signed up for that. It'll just be a one-month deal. I think there's four meetings and I believe that's going to be a good opportunity for people to understand a little bit more about how our police department and all of law enforcement works. And with that, nothing else.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwart?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, would like to congratulate Debbie. We are very excited to have you onboard, so glad to keep you around. But I would be remiss if we didn't thank Diane for her years of service as well, so a thank you to her for all the dedicated time and commitment that she gave to this job as a full-time employee. And best wishes to Debbie handling it as a part-time employee. I also was able to attend the groundbreaking at Wardinger Barn. It was an excellent ceremony, a lot of history there. And for those of you who have not, I would recommend reaching out to the Beaver Creek Historical Society. They have a tremendous amount of information on not only the history of the barn but also of the park in general. I would like to thank the police department and specifically Officer Brownlee and others who were at the Kiwanis meeting. They provided us Alice training, which is active shooter training. It was a tremendous eye-opening experience. First, they went through a lot of the steps and the things that, to think about when you have an active shooter, including, you know, identifying your doors and whether you run or barricade. But we also were able to do a almost live-action training. And so there was a Nerf gun involved and we hid in rooms and barricaded ourselves and ran, and I may have not successfully avoided the active shooter a few times, but it was it was kind of strange and eerie, the way that you actually felt in doing the demonstration. When you hear Nerf gun, you think, oh, it's a lot of fun, but when you're actually in it and doing it and you see someone come around the corner unexpectedly, it was chilling. And so I just want to thank the police department for that and encourage any private organizations that are interested in that training to reach out. I also had the opportunity to attend Sergeant Westler's retirement ceremony. It was very lovely ceremony, sad to see him go, but very thankful for all his years of dedicated service. And then next week, I just wanted to let my fellow councilmembers know, or not next week, next meeting, I will need an excused absence. I was one of four women selected to attend the Air Force Global Systems Command's Leadership Symposium, so I will be down in Louisiana that week, so very excited for that.
Very good.
And that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Curran?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, congratulations to Debbie. So happy to have you onboard and just doing a great job, a lot of challenges. I attended the Wardinger Park ceremony and was really excited about the enthusiasm within the Historical Society, hoping to come up with some bathroom option and a food option, kitchen. And they're looking at different things to kind of give that a real community use as this barn comes to life. Also attended the St. Patrick's Day lunch at the senior citizens. They had about a hundred and twenty-five meals that were served. People had a really nice time. Had the opportunity to hear Officer Chris Brownlee speak at Rotary. He's the Community Engagement Officer and it was really kind of exciting to hear all the different things that he's involved in to try to plug the police department into the community. Attended the, of course, which has already been mentioned, and congratulations again to Councilmember Doer. Really attend the breaking of a national Baptist church with the others and really enjoyed the whole process. And also, just Friday, attended Sergeant Westler's retirement, the banquet center here on Dayton-Zenia. Twenty-nine years of service to the citizens of Beaver Creek, very much appreciated by everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Thank you. Well, I guess I'll follow suit. Debbie, I'm not going to congratulate you because you're stuck with us now, so I think we're the ones who are lucky, but thank you for sticking around. Also, thank you to all of our volunteers. You know, we talked about the ones that were up here today, but also our COPP program that helps out. Councilmember Adams is greatly involved in that, that help our law enforcement out for some of these events where we can't staff them, as well as our senior center bus drivers. I think I have one next to me. I'm not sure if that's what he enjoys doing. But all the volunteers help our city run, especially for a city with no income tax, so it is helpful to have that. I was able to attend Sergeant Westler's retirement party, which again, just kind of drives home, which is great for him, that he's able to retire, but drives home this need that we have for more law enforcement. And I was able to swear in two new officers just the same month, but unfortunately, that's not going to be enough to make up the deficit that we have as well as additional retirement forthcoming. So appreciate everything that our law enforcement does. And then just in advance, save the date for Lemonade Day, which is coming to Beaver Creek on June eighteenth. This is a phenomenal, phenomenal event. A bunch of little kids in the area put up lemonade stands and you get your fill on a sugar rush, I would say, for the entire day. And then at the end of the day, they're awarded a first prize for the best lemonade stand in the city. So we're going to have more information on that coming up, but I wanted everyone to mark their calendars if you could because it is a really great day. There's usually more than just lemonade, so usually people have cupcakes and cookies and chips and all kinds of other sugar to get you hyped up for the day and then drive around. But thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for the time.
Thank you. And I think everybody's got it pretty much covered. We all had a lot of activities over the last couple of weeks and it's really good to be back out in public events and so everybody is really enjoying themselves in that aspect. So most, a lot of those events that were talked about, I was present at, but that's, we'll talk about what's going to happen. I've got a couple of things. One is the Ohio Mayor's Alliance. Our meeting is tomorrow in Columbus. And on this particular meeting, we'll be meeting with the state representatives and state senators. And we'll spend a half a day with them. And who knows, the range of conversations may come out of that. But we all know a lot of things are happening in Columbus and so yours truly will be there as one now. As a new board member, I'm also one of the speakers, so you just never know. And Debbie, remember, be careful what you ask for. You just might get it. But I look forward to tomorrow. It'll just be a long day. The VFW is having an event tomorrow at six o'clock for Vietnam veterans. You're asked to bring a dish that'll serve ten or twelve. Anybody that wants to come by, that's certainly welcome as well. that's certainly welcome as well. And then some of you may know that I've been doing some coffees at certain locations to talk and discuss the earnings tax and other issues that people may have. Several of you have joined me, and I appreciate that very much. Councilmember Schwartz is going to join me Thursday, I believe it is, at Panera?
Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday? Wednesday, the 30th. I got the number right, anyway. The 30th at 4:30 at Panera Bread. So anyone that would like to come out and, and talk to us, to ask questions, please do. I mean, that's, all we can try to do is communicate the best we can, and that's just one more step. So with that, I am finished, and I would like to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Debbie. It's, it's been an inside joke, because I've, with her being, you know, under the city manager, knowing that this was going to happen, I've fired her every day for the last two weeks. I would tell her she's fired. So this morning, I told her she was fired, because actually officially today, she is a council employee. So congratulations, Debbie. She's been a great asset to us, came in and helped us, really bailed us out with a very difficult situation that we went through, and she's just jumped in both feet, and we appreciate her very much. Mayor already mentioned the, with the mayor, we encourage these meetings with the mayor, and we hope to have maybe a couple more in April. We'll see about the scheduling here.
Can I add to that?
Yes, go ahead.
And that is just to let people know, if you have a group or an organization where you would like myself or a couple of councilmembers to come and talk to you, please reach out, and we'd be more than happy to do that. You can talk to the city manager's office, you can talk to the clerk's office. Just reach out, and the better we can communicate, the better we are. So that's all I want to say. Yeah, thank you.
Any kind, like Mayor said, any kind, if it's from HOA, or a church group, or a nonprofit, or any kind of group, you got a city kind of organization that you just want to ask questions, please feel free to reach out to 427-5510 is the city manager's office, and we'll get that scheduled for you. Wanted to mention, congratulations to Sergeant Westler. He, 29 years, yes, he had a meeting, and I couldn't actually make that. I was out of town on Friday, but I did congratulate him on Thursday. Did he get the final call, chief, or not? No. Phil wanted, did not want the last call to be made. He was just kind of emotional over it, 29 years of service. One thing, he served in several capacities, several different positions throughout the years, but one thing that he did very, very well, that helped us out, helped Beaver Creek out, was became, over our CLEIA assessment, our CLEIA accreditation, which is so vital for the police department, and he, he really brought us leaps and bounds with that accreditation process, which is sorely going to be missed. Our loss is, I guess, the state of Ohio's gain, coming within, after two months. So we'll miss Phil. Thank you, Sergeant, for all your work. Safety Town's been mentioned. I'm not going to repeat. The only thing I'm going to say on this is, this is like, what was it, the Chocolate Factory, Charlie and the Chocolate Factory on the ticket, golden ticket or whatever? These spots will fill up fast. So first come, first served. So Monday, April 4th, when that registration is posted, get it in. It'll be full before, before you know it. Volunteers are always needed. We do appreciate our volunteers, but if you're looking for an experience, making a difference in the community, from driving a bus, like Mayor Stone, to the golf course, to the parks, to the COPP for the police department, we just, what was that, four, over 4,000, 5,000 volunteer hours per year? Add that up, just a minimum wage, what that would be. It's astounding volunteerism here in Beaver Creek, and we appreciate that. So for more information of, from parks or senior center, you know, call, learn about available opportunities. You can always, 427-5514 is the Parks Division, and Senior Center, 426-6166. Just say, I'd like to volunteer, I'd like to do something, and we'll definitely not have a problem fixing you right up with that. Arbor Day Tree Contest, this is a unique, kind of different experience. We lost a lot of trees back in 2019, a lot of mature trees back in 19. That was a very, very mature area of trees that got taken out that day. But the Tree Advisory Board's looking for the largest tree in Beaver Creek, so the contest ends April 24th, so you have a little less than a month. So on Arbor Day, the 29th of April, the board will announce a winner who will receive a gift card from Knollwood Garden Center. Thank you for, yeah, thank you for Knollwood. Submit pictures, treeadvisoryboard@beavercreekohio.gov. So what we want you to do is, tree's location, type if known. I know, I look at them, and I, I can't tell, really, too much, I'm not good at that. But we want you to measure the circumference, measure at the chest height. The tree must be within Beaver Creek city limits, and details of the events are posted on the city's Facebook page. So a little, little interesting competition there, so please help us find the largest tree in Beaver Creek. And seasonal hiring, this is always, again, with volunteers, yes, but seasonals. We use seasonals from cutting grass in our right-of-ways and parks, to golf courses, to just, just so many different seasonal hirings that we need, and always a need. So please, if you want to look at a seasonal position for the summertime, it's a great opportunity for teenagers and young adults alike that may be here for college or in gone in fall. Visit beavercreekohio.gov and look under the tab Employment. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Lot of good things this evening. All right, at this point on the agenda, it is time for anybody that's here that would like to address counsel on any issue whatsoever. Does not have to be anything that's on the agenda tonight, can be on anything you wish. Anyone? In that case, we will move on to the next item. May I have a motion?
Move to adjourn, Your Honor. A second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.